Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, April 29th at 7:00 PM 2021. This is a remote meeting. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the April 29th, 2021 Public Meeting of the Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view this meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv. For the record, tonight I have in attendance for the Planning Board myself, Mark Knox, Barbara Mankowski, Peter Conroy, Michelle McCracken, and Jack Lynch present. Our clerk Kathy Murray is present. And so at this point, I'd like to start our public hearings. We have three on the agenda tonight. We have several people in attendance. So I just ask that once you'd like to speak, raise your hand. And when I yield the floor to you, that you state your name and address. At this time, I'm going to read into the record the notice of public hearing. The Lakeville Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to the Town of Lakeville zoning bylaw and Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, on Thursday, April 29th, 2021 at 7:00 PM via a virtual platform. Virtual meeting instructions can be found on the agenda located on the Town of Lakeville Planning Board webpage. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on proposed amendments to Lakeville bylaw. Section 6.7.2 Site Plan Review Procedure Business or Industrial. The amendment includes deletion of 6.7.2 to be replaced with the following. 6.7.2 Procedure-Business or Industrial. Site plan review applies to the following. A. New construction of a business or industrial structure. B. An addition to an existing business or industrial structure resulting in a floor area of over 1,500 square feet in the aggregate, or a disturbance in lot coverage of over 1,500 square feet. C. A change in occupancy of an existing business or industrial structure which increases the previously approved occupant load by 10% and/or greater. D. A change in use of an existing structure to a business or industrial use. Applicants for a building permit subject to Section 6.7.2 shall submit six copies of a site plan as described herein to the town clerk for Planning Board approval. Failure of the Planning Board to act within 21 days of receipt of the site plan shall be deemed lack of opposition thereto. A draft of the proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw may be viewed at the Town of Lakeville Clerk's Office in Town Hall, 346 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass. 02347, by appointment only. Amendments are also available for review on the Town website. Noted by Planning Board members Mark Knox Chairman, Barbara Mankowski Vice Chair, Peter Conroy, Jack Lynch, and Michelle McCracken. So at this time, I'd like to open the floor to discussion for Planning Board members on this proposed bylaw change to site plan review for business industrial. This is sort of a housekeeping thing that was brought to our attention by the Building Commissioner to better clarify how site plan review was triggered. I think it's a good improvement on what we had. This is actually drafted by Town Council based on our comments. And I have full support in this change. Would anyone else like to speak to it? Being that I see no other discussion, I'd make a motion to recommend approval at Town Meeting for this bylaw change.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack? And myself. Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is a notice of public hearing. The legal notice reads, "The Lakeville Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to the Town of Lakeville zoning bylaw and Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, on Thursday, April 29th, 2021 at 7:00 PM via a virtual platform." The virtual meeting instructions can be found on the agenda located on the Town of Lakeville Planning Board webpage. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on proposed amendments to the Lakeville zoning bylaw. Section 3.2.3 Establishment of Districts, comma, Floodplane Protection District, and amendments to the Floodplane District Regulations, Section 7.1. Amendments include additions and deletions to Section 7.1.3 Definitions, and the addition of the following new sections. Section 7.1.7 Administration, Section 7.1.7.1 Abrogation and Greater Restriction Section, Section 7.1.7.2 Disclaimer of Liability, Section 7.1.7.3 Designation of Community Floodplane Administrator, Section 7.1.7.4 Requirement to Submit New Technical Data, Section 7.1.7.5 Variances to Building Code Floodplane Standards, Section 7.1.7.6 Variances to Local Zoning Bylaws Related to Community Compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program, Section 7.1.7.7 Permits are required for all proposed development in Floodplane Overlay District, Section 7.1.7.8 Assure that all necessary permits are obtained, Section 7.1.7.9 Unnumbered Zones, Section 7.1.7.10 Recreational Vehicles, and Section 7.1.7.11 Local Enforcement. A draft of the proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw may be viewed at the Town of Lakeville Clerk's Office at Town Hall, 346 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass. 02347, by appointment only. Amendments are also available to be viewed on the Town website. This is presented by the Planning Board, Mark Knox Chairman, Barbara Mankowski Vice Chair, Peter Conroy, Jack Lynch, Michelle McCracken. This is a zoning bylaw that it's basically a housekeeping item that the federal government and the state have put in front of us to make sure that everybody has floodplain insurance or flood insurance. And it's just a requirement to update the flood maps to reflect the federal and state regulations. Does any other Planning Board member have any discussion on this? Michelle?
I just want to say thanks to Nate Darling. I know he put a lot of work into going through the existing the bylaws and, you know, pulling out the changes. And I know, you know, there was quite a bit that went into it. So just wanted to say thanks to him getting this done.
Yeah, I know a couple of times he credited me with a lot of work, but I know he did way more when he went through and redlined everything out, searched everything related to floodplain in the existing bylaw to make sure there was no either ambiguity, overlap, or contradiction. So I know he did spend a lot of time on that. And thank you for bringing that up, Michelle. That said, if there's no other discussion, I would entertain a motion for the Planning Board to support this zoning bylaw change at Town Meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning bylaw update for the FEMA floodplain flood map updates at Town Meeting on May 10.
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries unanimously. So third on the agenda, Notice of Public Hearing. The legal notice reads, "The Lakeville Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to the Town of Lakeville zoning bylaw and Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, on Thursday, April 29th, 2021 at 7:00 PM via a virtual platform. Virtual meeting instructions can be found on the agenda located on the Town of Lakeville Planning Board webpage. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with the opportunity to comment on a proposed amendment to the Lakeville bylaw petition by Susan J. Spieller et al. to remove the Development Opportunities District bylaw from the Town of Lakeville zoning bylaws. Section 7.9.1 through 7.9.6 adopted June 4th, 2012, at annual Town Meeting, approved by Attorney General July 18th, 2012. A draft of the proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw may be viewed at Lakeville Town Clerk's Office in Town Hall, 346 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass. 02347, by appointment only. Amendments are also available for review on the Town website. And this is also a public hearing for the Planning Board members Mark Knox, Barbara Mankowski, Peter Conroy, Jack Lynch, and Michelle McCracken. Where this was a citizen's petition, I would like anybody, including if so, Susan Spieler or anybody else that would like to speak to this zoning bylaw change. I would strongly recommend that the citizens speak on behalf of their proposed change. Anybody? So. John Jenkins?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. I don't think anyone in had any comments on it, other than it was just written and submitted. I don't, I didn't think this was a meeting that you would go in and defend the change or explain the change. We thought it was pretty straightforward. So that's why I don't think there's any comments to speak to.
Well, you're when you propose a bylaw change, it's wise to have Planning Board support. In that, I guess I would, we would expect somebody that wanted to propose a bylaw change to kind of lobby for it or speak to why. And I say that was, we did ask Town Council for some thoughts on this. And I just had a phone call with Council prior to the Planning Board meeting tonight. I feel like, and I fully understand why. I think I fully understand why this bylaw proposed change has been put in front of us. And it's strictly 43 Main Street. And I guess it is also fear that the town would be riddled with warehouses if this bylaw stays in place. And I don't think that's the case at all. Town Council, basically in the end of the first paragraph, "Deletion of the Development Opportunities District could result in less economic development and uncontrolled growth on larger parcels of land in town." You know, and again, I'm making some assumptions and I want you folks to speak to it as well, that this is here because of 43 Main Street and keeping in mind that that was a blighted parcel. If somebody came to the Planning Board with an open meadow or a large undeveloped section of woods next to a residential neighborhood, or I don't know, a country club, I don't know, just throwing it out there, pick your parcel. And somebody came in to do the same type of a warehouse development on a parcel like that, and there was no pollution, there was no existing detriment or eyesore, it would be very hard for the Planning Board to approve a property like that or a project like that. It would be easily deniable. Because it would be more detrimental than the existing by far. So again, I ask for your comments. Speak to this, please.
I guess the only thing I would say, and this would be speaking for the group, not necessarily myself, is the general feeling was that the DOD basically sets up a situation where a group of five can basically without positive feedback, without vote of the town, put in pretty much anything that wants, that's, that you deem acceptable. And we think that, you know, you're talking about 25 acres or plus. So we're not generally speaking about a small development. And we just feel that to have a law on the books like this that says, hey, collect the acreage, throw a plan together, and submit it to the Town Planning Board, and you're in. And we know, looking at what's going on with the Rhino stuff, that every survey we've done for residents of the town, it universally comes back with a majority saying, I would never vote that in. Yet DO allows that to happen. And because of that, we just feel that the DOD, if you will, is not appropriate for the town. It's not the way for the town to grow. It takes away all of the, generally, all of the feedback from the town members. And I mean, you know, I specifically at one point asked, do you take public opinion into view when you vote on a project? And the answer was, no. Unless it's a legal issue, no, we don't take public opinion in in our ultimate decision. So to have a DOD on the bylaws that says, that says, a group of five can move something into town with no true influence by the residents of the town, we don't think it's the right way to go. And I'll just say one other thing, so I'm clear. This has nothing to do with a personal opinion of the people of the Planning Board. You guys do a commendable job. You do a great job. There's very many people that could never do what you do. So this is nothing to be taken personally. This is just a thought that says, how do we want this town to develop? And, you know, who should have a say in it? And we think when you get into properties and developments of this size, it should be the residents of the town to vote it in. And you know, there's lawsuits coming. And it goes right with this. And most people won't speak to it right now because they've all been told, don't speak to this at this point. There's lawsuits and town meetings coming up. It can be addressed at that point in time. But you know, since you asked, I would, I would hope the Planning Board would agree with us and say, yeah, you're right. We don't think a DO district, and we can drop them all over the town, is the way to develop the Town of Lakeville. So I hope I'm clear and whatnot.
Barbara, would you like to say something?
Yeah, Mark, I'd like to jump in. First of all, I'd like to share with you guys, I think this is my fourth year on Planning Board, and I've learned a tremendous amount while being here. When I first came into this position, I had a lot of opinions about how things should be done. And as I learned from people who had been working on these things for many, many years, there were oftentimes very good reasons why things that I was suggesting or thought might make sense actually didn't make sense. And it was quite an education for me. I don't think anybody disagrees. I think, you know, it was, the Main Street project was painful for everybody. I'd like to make the suggestion, if, I don't know if the petitioners would consider, there was a reason why this was put in place in the first place. And I think there were some very well-intentioned reasons for doing so. And I would love to hear from anybody who was around at that time that may remember what the good reasons were. But I don't know that we should be throwing it away altogether and repealing it in its entirety. If the intention of the petitioners is to improve the citizens' input and not have it be monitored by a board, then that would be involving removing Regulation 7.9.3.1. And instead of granting these, Planning Board is a special permit granting authority, that it would be something that would have to go to Town Meeting or perhaps a couple of boards or something like that. That's just up for discussion. But I thought I'd mention that in lieu of repealing in its entirety, perhaps there's a modification that would be more amicable.
Yeah, so to that said, I just wanted to make a few mentions. We did receive a letter from Brad and Lois Nelson from 51 Harcourt Ave, which basically they're in opposition, like several people, about the Development Opportunities District. We have the signature page in our packet tonight from the petitioners, as well as the petition for insertion of the following, their warrant article. Just for the record, I wanted to state that, have those. The other thing I wanted to mention too is, one of our concerns with the repeal of the Development Opportunities District is that it, when it eliminates that section from the bylaw, it potentially exposes 43 Main Street to not go through the Planning Board, who was the special permit granting authority, because you basically eliminate those rules and regulations. So if that property undergoes a change, we are concerned that it's, it would become considered pre-existing non-conforming, rather than within that Development Opportunities District, because we eliminate the zoning. And we're concerned that five years from now, 10 years from now, with the change, that the abutters are actually more at risk of not being protected by a special permit, because with an entirely different board and no Development Opportunities District to refer back to, regulation can get lost. What I would like to see is all of the petitioners that are here tonight come back to work with us for the annual Fall Town Meeting to, if possible, if you think that you could work with us on that, to rewrite the bylaw, to either make it a small overlay zone, to keep it in place, if nothing else, but to protect 43 Main Street with the special permit, and/or slightly expand it for some economic development in town, but not town-wide.
So I used suggesting that we ask or Susan or whoever, I think she's probably muted out, but that we just pull the article from the town warrant and see if we can work something out, and then submit it for a Fall Town Meeting?
I would love you to come to us and the Planning Board make the warrant article, and you work with us. And it not be a citizen's petition, it be a Planning Board petition for the annual, I'm sorry, the Fall Town meeting. Special.
What?
Michelle had her hand up. I would like her to.
So I just had a couple of things that I wanted to say in regards to this. So I had a conversation with Nate Darling the other day, and he was telling me how a lot of the business and industrial zoned areas in Lakeville are already full. So we don't have a lot of space left for that sort of thing to go in. And now, keep in mind that when, when we do away with this DOD, that opens the door for very large developments of residential units. So my concern is if this is done on its own without something else in place to manage that growth, like in the way of limiting the number of building permits per year or something like that, I think, you know, a warehouse is far less detrimental to our town than hundreds of units of residential could be. So I think we have to, you know, consider what maybe, like Mark was saying, maybe work on where this could apply. I know previously the Planning Board had spoke about, you know, having it in certain areas. I think we had two areas that we said would be good to designate, which were close to highway on and off ramps. And that would, you know, make it so that it was not a big impact on the rest of the town. Because I think, you know, to have the choice between industrial use with a certain amount of it set aside for, you know, because you can only develop a certain percentage of that, of that large lot. But when you have residential units coming in, they're just going to be stacked on top of it. And it's far more detrimental to the town. It costs us taxpayers. It's, you know, it puts strain on our fire, our police, our resources, our schools. We heard, I think during one of the public hearings, that the middle borough, the new high school costs $100 million. I think that's what Leanne had said. So I think-
104 million.
Was it four? I thought she said 100.
104. Heather, I see your hand. I'm going to call on you one minute. But Pat Wren, you've had your little handhold thing up for a few minutes.
Yes. Hi.
How you doing?
Good, thanks. The problem that bothers me with the DOD is, like you say, it's on any parcel, 25 acres or more.
Yep.
And way back when, probably around 2012, when they were trying to develop, they wanted to change the industrial zoning, well, the business zone to industrial zone across from Joe's. And what I liked about that is being a Nambada. I got to go to the Town Meeting along with a lot of my neighbors and expressed why we didn't feel that 100 acres, out behind me actually, was good for industrial zoning. And so there was a discussion, because it was residents and the Planning Board and you know, the whole thing, the woman at the end of the street, who owns a beautiful historical home, that home was going to be destroyed to put in industry, to make that industrial zone where anything could go in there. So I like the input that residents can have on it, where right now that DOD is over, they say it's overlaid across the entire town. And, um, I think that you need more input from residents and abutters and the town itself as to, um, when it comes to changing a zone. And I think the D O D takes that away from us. Whether we can, you know, just change a zone, just have a zoning change. I guess that's about it.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Uh, Heather Bodwell, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I was just, um, concerned with what Michelle was saying. Um, Michelle, are you no longer for a D O, the D O D elimination? I just want to add on the record.
I'm, I'm not saying I'm against doing away with it altogether. I, I have considered both options, you know, of, you know, keeping it in place in certain areas or doing away with it altogether. Um, I, I do see, like I said, it's, it's a double edged sword because to allow for these large parcels to just continue to be developed as only residential, I do see that that as being a strain on the town. More so than, you know, one.
I'm not sure how only residential would go in forty-three Main Street. How?
Oh, no, I'm not saying, I'm not saying specifically to that location, but I'm saying for any large parcel throughout the town. Um, because when you have the twenty-five acres, it could be in a residential area. And those twenty-five acres, we know that we only need seventy thousand square feet and that's a house lot. So you could have twenty-five acres of house lots as opposed to one industrial use there. So, so that's my concern. I, I see both, I see both sides of it, you know, um, keeping it in place and then, you know, doing away with it. It's a tough thing to do away with it altogether and not have a limit to the number of new construction that we have. I think it needs to be done in conjunction with that so that we're not just saying we can't, you know, we're not going to allow for industrial development. Welcome the housing. I think that we need to limit the new construction at the same time that we would do away with the D O D.
Barbara?
I, I'd like to make a clarification on Michelle's point as well. With most of the housing development that we're talking about, you can't control it. And also because under chapter forty, you know, we don't need to go into the whole affordable housing thing, but I just want people to understand. As a municipality, you, you don't have as much control over that type of development. And furthermore, the governor has recently made some changes as a part, as part of the Housing Choice Act, um, I believe it's called. And the, a simple majority is all that's required to change the underlying zoning, um, and get residential done. Uh, instead of having a two-thirds majority, it would only require a simple majority. So in some communities, that could be as few as eight people. Um, and so I think the pressure to develop housing and high density housing in particular, not just single family homes like we're used to in this community, but high density apartments, um, and, uh, and condominiums. I think are, are what's going to be happening. It's the only way. Can make a lot of profit. So I think when we look at the developments, we think about the potential for build out. And if the build out potential is very significant, we have to weigh that consideration um, against the other opportunities in front of us. If retail had appeared in front of us, four forty-three, uh, chapter, uh, Main Street, I think that there probably would have been, oh, you know, or mixed use. I think that we would have welcomed that. It would have made it the whole decision much easier. But that oper- that business opportunity wasn't available for the developers and that's why that opportunity was never presented to us. It's the market. It's what the market's deciding, not what we decide. It's what's presented to us. So I just, I hope that clarification helps a little bit.
Thank you, Barbara. Uh, Mr. Jenkins, you have another point?
Yeah, just, uh, briefly, the, the, Barbara's accurate in her statement, at least I, I believe you're accurate in her statement. It's a, it's a market driven activity right now. And to me, that, that further reinforces why there should be more controls over the development of a particular area, uh, limited to just five people in town. Uh, it, it, there should be, uh, a significant, uh, town input. The other thing is I, I'm under the impression that the D O D bylaw has never really been exercised until right now with Rhino. So we're, you know, we, we passed this thing eleven years ago uh, at the town meeting, you know, fifty-nine people said yes, and nineteen said no, and here we are. And then it sat dormant until something came up and look what happened. Uh, we ended up with a, with a, a development that when polled, the majority of town residents say, I don't like it. I would never vote.
John, John, I want to stop you right there. Is that off of Lakeville residents for responsible growth poll?
That's one of the polls. Another one of the polls that came through is, uh, Lakeville helping Lakeville. Another one of the polls was done by one of the members that basically just sat down and started dialing and asking. So every, a- and again, we're not an official organization that has, uh, great resources and lots of free time and all that, but everything we've seen has pointed to a majority vote that says, I would never vote this in. And, and again, I just look at this and say, we passed this, the town passed it i- in twenty twelve. This is the first time we've used it. And the results have not been, and I don't mean your work, your effort, but the end result, when the town, uh, residents are asked about it, the majority say, I would never vote that in. So we think, go back to the old way of doing things and run the risk of somebody putting in too many houses and having too many kids and costing the school, but we think that's a better way to go.
So I, I, I respect the, the, the polls you've taken, but everybody that I've talked to has said about time.
Yeah.
Regarding that property, but I, I don't want to dwell on the hospital property. Everybody's going to have an opinion. I think much like the Cisco vote, it's probably about fifty fifty. Town. Uh, I think that would be fair to say. Um, anyway, what I would like to see is all of you come back to the planning board to work with us. And, and again, I have no opinion. Um, I don't have, really have a dog in the fight on the development opportunities district, other than I want to protect the special permit for forty-three Main Street. And if you came back to us and worked in the fall and the only resolution is make it overlay district that only protected forty-three Main Street. And other than that, that's the only property that got developed with development opportunities district. I'm fine with it. And reshare it.
I think the, the issue that I see with doing that, and I'm not speaking for the group, I'm honestly just talking through my own thoughts right now, is isn't that spot zoning? If you just.
Well, you can make it bigger than that, but maybe that's the only twenty-five acre parcel that covers the zoning block that we cover.
Heather Bodwell. The other thing that, oh, sorry.
Emmer, you can finish.
No, the other thing that I guess I'm confused by is like at the beginning, you said if it wasn't a blighted property, this never would have gone in.
I don't say it never would have, but I think that that was a big deciding factor. What? You, you have a big pause there.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to, I'm not, I'm better when I have time to think and then write you an email, I guess. But I, I guess the, the, my thought process is then, I, I don't know. I guess, go ahead, go ahead.
So, so if I could clarify, then my, my comments about that. And I, I thought I articulated it well, but if that proposal was proposed on any other parcel, I would find it very hard for planning board to approve. Because it, any other parcel would not have had the detriment that the hospital property has.
Well, I, I guess the difficulty in me hearing that when I feel so passionate about that property is, is that the planning board's job or should that have been D E P forcing the owner of the property to clean it up? And maybe the town getting behind that? I mean, was that?
The town has no, no enforcement in that and, and D E P is driven by that. Your office is a half mile from there and they haven't done anything since it changed hands in two thousand thirteen or whenever he bought it. And so.
But do you, do you, I mean, it's, it's a difficult thing to hear for someone that was so opposed to that, um, site that that's really the only reason it was passed.
Yeah, it bothers me that D E P decided to finally speak up when Rhino stepped in, but they didn't say a word uh, prior to that for the past seven and a half years.
Yeah, pressure should have been put on, I guess.
Barbara, did you have a comment?
No, I'm gonna, no.
Heather, would you like to say something?
I just want to go back again to, um, Michelle's comment about amending, if we pulled the D O D petition that we're talking about now, and we amended it to just put on a few properties around town, uh, by law, every time a D O D is placed and then put on the zoning map, it comes to town vote every time. So we can't just do that. It has to go to a town vote. That's all I want to say. It has to be shown on the.
Well, I, I would certainly look to uh, council for an opinion on that.
That's what my lawyer says too. It has to be, and your non-conforming pre-existing is for structures and uses, not zoning. Just wanted to.
It's, it's for special permits.
Well, no.
It is.
I, I'm, I, I'm not going to go further. My lawyer told me not to comment.
Okay. I just want to go through the, uh, Facebook comments. This, there's been several and I have neglected to read them. Uh, much earlier, uh, Melissa Turcot, I would just like to say that I wasn't aware that the development opportunities was going to be discussed at town meeting nineteen years ago. As a neighbor, I was really taken back when I found out Mr. Maskey was a selectman when this was put through, when he was, when trying to sell it. Uh, Nora Klein commented, it's not just about forty-three Main Street. Uh, Sharon Dennis, why do we have to accept large residential units, limit them? Uh, Sharon Dennis also said, we are full. Have you seen La Barron lately? Katie Goodfellow, article cannot be removed from the warrant. She would know, she's town moderator. However, a motion may be made to table the question, which will postpone it. Um, Facebook comment, Lillian Drain, please note, the petitioner will need to, need a motion if this warrant article is going to be postponed. Um, so that's informational for everybody that's here, depending on the outcome from tonight's public hearing. Uh, and Amy from town council has just arrived, so we could ask her any questions as well. Um, hey, Amy, how are you?
Sorry about that. Sorry, I was on another meeting.
Yeah, no problem. Um, so where we're at, uh, trying to amicably, amicably work with the, the residents that have attended tonight regarding the elimination of the development opportunities district, uh, we've, I've made the suggestion to maybe make a smaller zone that would encompass forty-three Main Street to keep the rules and regulations in place. Um, and, and also maybe that would allow us to control development if there were other parcels within whatever zone was chose. Uh, and obviously th- their, their proposal is to eliminate the development opportunities district at this point. I, I think that's just kind of where we stand. I don't think that, uh, anybody's made a decision. Uh, Heather, would you like to speak, say something?
So you were just asking town council that, and I just want to follow up with my question. If we were to do that and place the D O D just on the hospital property and adjacent parcels, would that not need to go, wouldn't that need to go to a town vote to place the, a D O D on a certain property in town?
It would be a bylaw change.
Yeah.
Right, which is, which is what's proposed right now. Yep.
Yeah. So it would have to go to a town vote. Thank you.
Yes.
Heather, just to clarify, would that be amenable?
Would what?
That type of a change. Would, would you, you or the, the other people in the group tonight that have proposed the elimination of development opportunities, would you be in support of a change that went to town meeting vote to make that a small zone?
But probably not, but I just wanted to clarify that the planning board can't just place the D O D on a particular.
That's correct. We can't.
Well, Michelle had said we're going to pick places and I just said, well, we have to town vote those places.
Again, that, that was to work with the residents and choose maybe two zoning overlay areas. So there would be specific zones shown on the zoning map in order to
Yeah.
locate them for clarity. And that would also be a zoning bylaw change that would go to town meeting.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I was just referring to our previous, um, discussions during planning board meetings. We had previously discussed, um, limiting it to certain areas.
Going back over a year. Yes.
Barbara, did you have another comment as well?
No, just on top of Michelle's that, um, you know, we had been having these discussions for some time about, you know, the locations of where we could limit this so that it wasn't covering, you know, the whole entire town, but that we still had areas that we knew were right for this kind of development that we could have protections on. Again, there were reasons why these things were put in place in the beginning, and I think that's something that would be important to discuss at town meeting.
I think in any changes we make, we need to make sure that we don't open ourselves up to no massive housing development that would really, uh, impact on the infrastructure of the town.
Yeah.
Now it's definitely uh, for the high density housing with the
Exactly.
States pushing.
Exactly.
Really pushing, really, really pushing.
Yes. Definitely.
Heather, did you have another comment? I thought I saw your hand go up.
No, um, no, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. John Jenkins, I see the hand up. Symbol.
There, I'm unmuted. Uh, can I draw the conclusion from your comments that if the, uh, the, the, I'll call it the Rhino project is completed and installed, that the pressure for, uh, uh, a lot of housing will go away?
No.
It won't go away.
Not at all.
No.
No, it's just going to grow from here.
So, uh, uh, so i- i- if the Rhino property was aborted, uh, or if it's not aborted, it makes no difference. You're going to get pressure to build high density, wha- whatever the wording is for, I don't know, but you're going to get that anyway. And the, the advantage of Lakeville is there's lots of open area, which is, a- and we've got access to major cities and the T and four ninety-five, we got, we got the transportation infrastructure that makes us attractive. And put in the COVID change and how business happens and people working from home and there's a big push to move out of the city and if you will, get to the country and still keep your, your job. So so we're, we're, we don't think this, this pressure is going to go away, no matter what happens with the hospital robbery.
No, I think John, with the commuter rail development, I think that's just an enticement for more housing to come in.
I, I, I agree. Could I ask one other question to the chairman?
Go ahead, John.
Uh, again, I'm not experienced in all this, so I'm a rube, but does, do, does the planning board have to come up in this public meeting with a, a decision to say you are for or against an article that's on the town warrant?
Actually, I think that, uh, and Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, if we don't act on it, um, that's also, what does that negate the existence of it or something? We, we had talked about this briefly.
Yeah. So, um, so Amy Questle, town council, um, so that we're dealing with, um, somewhat conflicting statutes here, which is, um, forty-eight, section five requires that the planning board either, um, make a, they have to make a recommendation on a zoning amendment. And, um, that recommendation just simply goes to town meeting. Um, if the planning board does not make a recommendation, twenty-one, after twenty-one days, the plant, the, the article can go to town meeting without a recommendation from the planning board. However, um, town meeting is May 10th, and so we don't have twenty-one days. And so if the planning board does not make a recommendation under 48, Section 5, this, this article really technically cannot be enacted. However, this is a citizen's petition, which means that under Chapter 39 of the general laws, under a citizen's petition goes on the warrant the way that it is presented at the town clerk's office. We are not allowed to change it in any way, shape, or form. So even if a citizen's petition is filed with the town clerk and it has numerous misspellings, we cannot even fix the misspellings. We cannot touch it at all. And so the article will be placed on the warrant. It will be at town meeting. So whether it can be enacted or not without, without the planning board's recommendation would be a decision that will be made by the Attorney General under 40, Section 32.
Thank you. So is there any other discussion from planning board members about this proposed bylaw change? Barbara?
I'm open to having discussions at town meeting. I'm sure there'll be many members present who can talk to why they voted in favor of this in 2012, so we can have a better understanding of where they were coming from at that time. I, and also really have more debate on the risks for giving up the special permitting process, which it really concerns me, losing that. So I am not in favor of passing this forward with planning board approval, but I am in favor of having discussion, which we will do anyway, at town meeting.
Anyone else? Michelle?
I just, I was wondering if Peter had any comment. I was curious to hear if he had anything. He's been on here the board the longest.
I actually, I had written down something, and it's basically exactly what Barbara just, just wrote. This, this warrant as written, I wouldn't be in favor of it as a planning board member, simply because it's, it's, it's just deleting the, the district completely. And I'm afraid of the ramifications of that at this time. I'd like to see, like Mark suggested, that we go back to this and work on it this summer and prepare for the fall meeting, if that's workable, but, and, and we change it around to suit everybody, both the, the townspeople and the planning board. So my, my suggestion is that we just, you know, we don't endorse, we don't endorse the change, but obviously we'll see it at town meeting and everyone will get a vote.
Mr. Jenkins, that said, because you seem to be the, the voice of a lot of the attendees and the, the folks that assembled this petition, I ask that, would you be willing to come in and work with us if we proposed a bylaw change rather than elimination? And we don't make a recommendation on this bylaw at this time?
So in a sense, don't vote on the article at the town meeting, but ask for it to be continued to the fall town meeting?
That's an option, yes. You could, you could ask for it to be tabled until fall town meeting, and we come back with an amended bylaw change. Or or you just try to let it get voted, and we don't make a recommendation and see what happens, and then see if the Attorney General approves it or doesn't.
Well, I, I, I would think that it would make more sense for the benefit of the town if we suggested that it be continued and not voted on until the fall. And if the planning board were to simply say, "We, we approve that action that we want to work through this further over the summer," I think that would be a great way to go, that everybody could, you know, have some breathing room to figure out what's the best way to get this done, that all parties are, are happy. I think that's a elegant way to address it right now, rather than throw it out there and have eight million people arguing or trying to make amendments to amendments. Let's push it forward to the fall.
We would appreciate you working with us, and, and we would look forward to that. So that said, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to not make a recommendation on this proposed bylaw change.
Second.
So, so that motion, if I may, Mr. Chairman,
Go right ahead.
The motion would be that you are not going to make a recommendation on this bylaw amendment due to the fact that you are planning on working with the, working with the public to come up with a different zoning amendment for the fall.
So moved. I'm gonna adopt that as my motion.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter? Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
My cell. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Jenkins, I would remind you that somebody needs to read the motion at town meeting on behalf of the citizens, and then we would follow up the you need to read the motion for the development opportunities change, and then we would then make, or you would make the motion with our support to table it until the fall town meeting.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you for coming in. I look forward to working with you. If there's a way that you can keep your contact information with Kathy Murray, then when we post that on our agenda for discussion throughout the next few months, to make sure that we're ahead of the game for the fall town meeting, we'd like you all to be involved, even if you can't make it, to, to make a comment by email and send it in. I hope that works for everybody. And Kathy, do you have a way to, or just to be able to contact these folks when we say, "Let's put that on the agenda"?
Well, anyone that requested a link, I have the email saved, so.
Okay. And Heather and John, you guys could share that if you wanted to get other people involved in that discussion. Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for working with us, and we look forward to it. So Amy, there's a question from Susan Spielor, who has, she was actually the petitioner that got previous article on our hearing tonight. And she has asked, "So can anyone make the motion to postpone, or does it have to be her since she turned in the petition?"
If she's at town meeting, it should be her. If she's not at town meeting, she can designate, I, I think she could definitely designate somebody to do that. Is, is that the issue? That she won't be at the meeting?
I don't know if it's an attendance thing, but I, I, I have a sense that it's just maybe she doesn't feel comfortable public speaking, and maybe she would like a designee.
Oh, yeah. Oh, sure, sure.
Okay.
Yes, yes, definitely.
Okay, so Susan, I hope that answers your question.
So she could even, she could even present, it, it could be presented to the moderator ahead of time that it would be, that it's going to be tabled until the fall.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and, and the reason why I'm, I'm hesitating is because every town meeting is different, and every moderator is different. So we would want it, what we'll do is we'll check with the moderator on this one and make sure that either the moderator, you know, that the moderator, however the moderator wants it done, we'll do it that way.
Okay. Barbara?
Mark, you might want to look at some of the comments that Sean's posting. Lillian Drain commented.
She'll know.
Yeah, that's why I meant. Maybe Mark can read that.
I already did.
Okay, did you read it out?
I read Lillian's, "Please note, the petitioner will need to motion if the warrant article is
Okay.
want to be part."
Yeah, it answers that.
Postponed. Yeah, I think I read through Lillian before.
Okay.
Pat Ren said, "Development opportunities gotta go," and then Susan asked that question, but I do believe that I said the Lillian thing unless I referenced it. Didn't say her name.
May I comment on another Facebook comment from Sharon Dennis?
Sure.
The comment was, "Why do we have to accept large residential units? Limit them." And I would refer her to review Chapter 40 of the Mass State statute under the Affordable Housing Guidelines. If you have not met your quota, you're not in compliance with your housing production plan, then you do not have much say. When a developer proposes something like that, it's up to state approval, not the town. I hope that answers that question.
So, so just to add on to that, yes, that is the, under 40B, that is the, the requirements. However, as you all know, the governor issued the Housing Choice Bill, which promotes multifamily, multifamily housing. And so that will be coming soon to everyone. We have a little bit of a reprieve, but we are going to have to start zoning for multifamily developments as of right in certain areas, et cetera, et cetera. So this is something that is, like 40B, this is something that is going to be pushed by the Commonwealth and not the town of Lakeville, so you know, it's not our fault kind of thing, but the Commonwealth is the one behind all of this.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Pat Ren, I see you have the, the hand held up symbol. Would you like to make a comment?
Yes. So if the DOD stays in place until the fall, you're talking about, you know, shelving it for now? The vote? What happens if another special permit comes up within that time? Like for another parcel of land? And you need a special permit and you know, you have to go through this whole thing again. Once it's already been issued, and you only have, what is it, three months or?
Six months.
Whatever it is to me to, to come. Six months?
That, that doesn't count. That doesn't count for this. That's only specifically to the hospital property, because that was deemed a 43D, which was only specific to that one property in the town of Lakeville.
Right.
Because it was blighted.
Right, but the DOD allows you to, like, have, to rezone under another special permit for any type of parcel, right? Correct? Or no?
No, no. So, so, so the DOD applies to any parcel that's 25 acres or more. But, but it, it, and it only allows certain uses, but it's a special permit by the planning board. And so a special permit, the timeline with a special permit is that you have to hold a hearing within 65 days, and then that hearing goes as long as that hearing goes, until the planning board has as much information as they, as they can make a decision. Then that is closed, and then there are 90 days to issue a decision. So that's in, that's completely a stark difference to 43D, which is what the hospital property was under, which is, which is, that doesn't happen, that doesn't happen often. I, I can tell you. So 21 years I've been practicing, and I've seen two 43Ds come through, so it doesn't happen a lot. And so the hospital, because it was a blighted property, that was an expedited permitting. So any project that comes in after May 10th, you know, if it's a large project, this planning board, obviously, I think, you know, seeing them do their diligence with, with, you know, this, this last one, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna hire a peer reviewer, they're gonna do studies, so most likely, there won't be anything issued before the fall. I, I would, I would think.
No chance.
I would hope not. Okay.
I don't want to guarantee anything, but I, I, it's, it's, I don't think that that would happen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, moving on. Jack, I'm gonna give you an opportunity. Give us a little master plan implementation update under some new business.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think you're okay with, with me? You're done?
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate you coming in.
No problem. No problem. Have a good night.
Thank you. You also.
Thank you.
Okay, Amy.
At the meeting on the 20th, the first half of the meeting, we sent it around, is our favorite subject, DOD. And there were just numerous comments made by the members. It was too vague. Many of the residents, when it was initially implemented, didn't understand the, its implications and what, and what it was supposed to accomplish. The implications and the goals of the DOD were not clearly articulated upfront to the residents and to many members of the, the different boards. A recommendation was made by one of the members that it be modified. Rodney, the chairman, responded by saying it couldn't be modified, but either had to be approved or repealed. Whether he's correct or not, I don't know. The second half of the meeting focused on the master plan matrix, which Rita had prepared, and you really did a wonderful job. The main points after that were about how to disseminate to the residents of the town, the different projects that all the different boards within the town were working on. Whether it, and one of the recommendations was to be a stuffer in the real estate tax bill. Finally, at the end, Rodney advised that the, he had accepted a representative orals offered to speak at an upcoming meeting, which date had not yet been identified. That was pretty much it.
Thank you, Jack. Does anybody else have anything else they'd like to comment on or add to? Go ahead, Barbara.
I'd just like to make a request that the Rachel's Way subdivision that we scheduled up for the first meeting in June, rather than trying to squeeze it in in May.
What's that? I'm sorry.
We have a, we have a new subdivision coming in front of us, Rachel's Way.
Oh.
And I'd like to request that we schedule that for the first week of June, rather than trying to squeeze it in in the next four weeks. I think Kathy was, you know, was concerned.
From a, from a application standpoint, Kathy, what's the, what are the beginning and end parameters for the first hearing that we need to have from the time that that was?
There's like, you have 135 days to go through the whole thing, I believe.
For the first hearing?
I, I think that's for the completion of the whole thing.
All right, so.
There's, I don't think there's a deadline.
You just don't want to do the second, you don't want to do the second meeting in May either, Barbara? Push it to the first in June? You're muted.
Sorry, Mark. I was muted. We, we can, we can do it in May. I just think it's, we have a lot going on, if I look forward on the schedule, so I thought it might make sense to just push it into the first meeting in June. But whatever you guys want to do, it's just a suggestion here.
The, the first that I could get advertised would be for your last meeting in May. It has to go on the paper for two weeks. So the earliest it could be is the 27th, and that's why I asked you, because that's like the last week of May, and it's like a holiday, and you know, sometimes maybe people wouldn't be around that week. And then the next day would be June 10th.
So is it the, the, the clock for the 1:35 start when you advertise it, or we have the first hearing?
I think it starts when you receive. I'd have to check on that. I'm
All right, so.
Not super familiar with those, but.
I, I'd like to try and get it on the 27th of May then, right at the end of the month. And even if we have to continue it a couple of times, I'd rather do that. I, I don't want to waste the applicant's time, but I also don't want to drag our feet, and then we'll all sing it very busy in June, and we regretted not trying it at the second meeting in May.
Okay. Mark, did you want to talk about the right to farm bylaw?
Yep. So I talked to two people today. One of them, Jared Darling, is on the Agricultural Commission. He's not really into the Zoom stuff, but if, if you don't know him, he's Nate's younger brother. He's a great guy. He's quite different from Nate, but equally is, is an excellent person. So he's fully in support of it. Um, so he's fully in support of it. Um, I talked to Nate, because I had concerns about, um, people farming, doing agricultural things on small lots that were unreasonable. Uh, because I didn't want to, we don't need to vote to support that, but I think we could, if somebody wanted to speak at town meeting and support, they also could, but it's, it's not required for us to make a vote on that tonight. That said, I, I didn't want to leave this meeting thinking we would support something where somebody could actually put a horse on a quarter acre lot in Clark Shores. Uh, so in speaking to the building commissioner, that's not possible. The, the Board of Health has specific regulations for those things. And there is a general bylaw that would sort of cover anything that's noxious or, uh, I forget the other term, just a nuisance would not be allowed. So it is a little bit ambiguous or interpretable, uh, or subjective, I should say. Uh, there are things in place within our bylaws to protect abutters and also regulate what people could do within the Right to Farm Bill. So I'm not opposed to it, but I'd like to hear everybody else's comments. Would anybody else like to speak to it? Barbara, you have your hand up.
So, I live on Johnson Drive, which is a subdivision community, one point six acre lots. And a few years back, maybe ten years ago or so, I had a adjacent property where they fenced off the lot and decided they were going to invest in alpacas. And I was quite distraught, as you can imagine, having planned to put a pool in and so forth. Um, and at that time, when I looked into the bylaws, you know, it was kind of a gray area, to be honest with you. And the, the reality was, is this development was not built with covenants. So subdivisions that are built with covenants that have, you know, a rulebook to play by are much stronger than, I think, relying on just the bylaw on its own. Um, and that's just coming from my experience here with that issue.
Anyone else? Michelle?
Well, I would love having alpacas next door. Personally, but that's just me. Um, I did compare it to, um, I did some searching and just wanted to make sure that it is consistent with what else is out there for right to farm bylaws. And I did find Stowe had almost the same, almost word for word, um, just very few minor, um, wording changes here and there, um, in regards to, like, what was actually presented. So I'm for it, I, I mean, I have a neighbor down the street, he's eighty years old, he's lived here all his life. He tells me about the farms all over the place and, and to me, um, you know, farming makes our community richer and it's, it's part of what allows us to have, you know, access to, you know, clean air, clean water, clean food, when we know where it's coming from locally. Um, I definitely support that, even if it is on a small parcel. Um, I'm all for, you know, individual freedoms and, and, um, the little farming community turned residential housing boom, I guess. Um, but I support it, the only word that I didn't like about it was, um, I think the third bullet point on the, um, second or third page, it was, um, you know, the pesticides. Because I'm, when I drive by the cranberry bogs and I see the guys in the full hazmat suits out there spraying the bogs with pesticides, I just worry that that's all going into the water system and we all have wells and if it's not good for fish, it can't be good for us. So, you know, that's the only thing I didn't like was that, you know, they're free to use pesticides. So, other than that, I, I do fully support it.
Um, and I, I can't speak to what you see on the neighbors there, but I do know one local small grower, um, he has told me, and he's eighty-plus years old, uh, off Montgomery Street, he's got bogs. And, uh, he says everything that they use now is organic, even, uh, I don't want to say a lot of names, but, uh, Peter Beaton, um, he's an ocean spray grower, a lot of bogs from here to Wareham. Same thing, he says everything is organic for all their herbicides, pesticides. He says they're all, they, they only last for so many hours or days, they don't last like a chemical that just goes down into the water table, which is nice. Uh, and he, he's been doing it long enough, he said, years ago, when they sprayed with the old chemicals and they were trying to kill an aphid, everything was dead.
Hmm.
Everything except the plant. And nowadays, if they try to kill an aphid, butterflies still live and the bees live because of the way that they, they make the pesticides now. And again, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking about commercial growers, because you brought up the cranberry, but, um, I would only hope that residential and agricultural people would, would seek the most organic pesticides and herbicides possible, but it's, I think some of that's a matter of what's available on the market. And I think if you're talking about small growers, you're probably talking about small quantities that wouldn't be that high commercial strength either.
Right, I would hope so.
So I, I did, uh, bring up the, the, the horse on the small parcel example, as well as, uh, would hate to see, uh, you know, a, a guy with a quarter acre lot, put his beehive right against his neighbor's shed door. Um, and Nate felt, and also with, a- along with the Board of Health regulations, he's had some issues like that and he's actually put them to the Agricultural Commission and they went and talked to people and they resolved those issues, not specifically the beehive problem, but things that he likened to be similar, that there are mechanisms to address those that have been used and seem to be successful. So, uh, Peter, do you have an opinion on this or no?
I'm actually in favor of it, I think it's a good, um, I think it's good for the town. I drive through a lot of towns constantly and, uh, I, I do, I do notice the signs. And, um, you know, it, it, when you see the signs, you start to think about it, like, oh, you know, what is, what does it entail? So when I read through this, it was, um, pretty informative, so, uh, I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, and I think Lakeville could do well with it. Um, the one town that I think of locally that it kind of scares me is Akushnet, because it's half city and half country. And I think it kind of opens the floodgates for chickens running on Main Street. Uh, but I guess that's, that could be a risky Lakeville.
They only run out there for so long.
I think it fits in nicely with our model for resiliency and how much of a priority that is for our community. So I'm totally in favor of it as well.
That's great. Um, okay, I mean, I, like I said, we don't need to vote on it, but I wanted to discuss it publicly so some people heard outside of the Agricultural Commission, because I, I hadn't seen any of their meetings. Uh, and, uh, I do know at least two people on the Agricultural Commission that are great guys. And if they're backing it, and from what I hear from everyone else, I, I, I do give it my support as well. So, i- if anybody wanted to speak at town meeting on behalf of it, outside of the planning board, uh, I, I would urge them to. Kathy, I think we've got everything covered tonight, it looks like we've covered all the action items. Um, and our next meeting is going to be on Thursday, May thirteenth, at seven P M. So at this time, if there's no other action in front of the board, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Uh, Barbara?
Aye.
Peter? Shell?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, meeting is adjourned.